Hey, welcome everyone. It is Monday, July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and it is time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. As the clerk certify the meeting.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
For color, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thanks. Changes to the agenda. I have, uh, I'd like to add one information item. We're gonna hear from Chief Samba regarding uh, an issue that Councilmember Jorgensen had brought up, and that is uh, giving us a little presentation on how we're dealing with the fentanyl crisis and how it's impacting us. So, uh, counsel, if you would, uh, I'd like to add that to, uh, I guess we can call it special business number three. Okay, if I can get a motion to that effect, we'll change the agenda.
Mr. Mayor. I so move.
And I would second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you. Agenda is amended. Next item is the consent agenda. Did I miss the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought that was going pretty fast.
Keep going on.
Okay, next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second, but a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk called all.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Those.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Um. Hey, I apologize. Well, this is populated. I did have a question regarding the staff reports.
No, we're not.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Sorry.
Have the agenda. Thank you.
Hey, any, any further discussion? Hearing another clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Okay, now we're at special business, uh, authorizing or ratifying the appointment of Darren Osterhout to the North Ada Fire and Rescue Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Mr. Waddams. Send us all a memo.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, sorry, that wasn't in the packet. I just looked at it again. Uh, mayor members of the council, I started looking at this again and realized back in two thousand and nineteen when we set up the advisory committee that we did it by resolution. So I figured since we did it by resolution in two thousand and nineteen, might as well just keep that theme going and do another resolution. So, uh, that's what the memorandum and the proposed resolution is. The, the issue is that the state code has been amended. It was amended in twenty-one. And it says for any advisory committee for any impact fee advisory committee, uh, they must be people who reside within the boundaries of the service area. Bill Truax does not live within the service area, so he qualifies to be on the committee, but, um, Mr. Osterhout does. He lives in the city limits and, um, and I know that he's met with the mayor and he's willing to serve, and so I recommend the appointment. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Just, uh, for everyone's information, Mr. Osterhout is a uh, branch manager for Graybar, which is a large, rather large electrical supply company.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, rather than, uh, approve authorizing an appointment of Mr. Osterhout to the North Ada Fire, County Fire and Rescue uh, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, uh, I move that we do so by resolution.
Okay, we have a resolution number if you want to continue that thought.
Uh, well, I was.
You don't.
I just wanna make sure everybody agrees that's how we're gonna do it.
Any, anyone disagree? Okay, so on advice of the attorney, we will, um, the matter before the council will be the appointment via resolution, resolution number eleven fifty dash twenty-three. So if someone's willing to make that motion, we will.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I vote to approve resolution number eleven fifty dash twenty-three.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Okay, item F two, monthly staff reports, Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, my question is regarding development services. And specifically, I noted that Ella Estates is on hold. Is, do we know the reason that that development is on hold?
Hannah, do you know anything about that? Come up, or we can get you on there. Welcome, Ms. Veal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we have the subdivisions Ella Estates on hold because they were figuring out a easement issue. Um, since the application was last heard, I believe last fall, um, it has not been resolved and the application has gone silent. We haven't expired that application yet, uh, simply because it hasn't been a year.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item three, chief.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, full transparency, Chief Allen had most of this ready before he left, so it was pretty easy. Live today when the mayor called, so, um, the question that I believe Councilmember Jorgensen had brought forth is fentanyl, how does it affect us in Garden City? What are we doing about it? Uh, is it sold online? Is, are they, are we, do we have anyone here trafficking in other places? And so, um, is it, so one of the questions was, is it intentionally being laced? Yes. So right now, fentanyl is about eighteen to nineteen hundred dollars an ounce to buy, if you're gonna buy it illegally. Meth is about three hundred dollars an ounce. Fentanyl is much more addictive, so they take a little bit of meth or a little bit of fentanyl and they put it into meth. And they sell it as you know, a mixture and that gets you more addicted and you buy more and it's just a reoccurring, it's just a profit margin for them to lace these pills with fentanyl because it gets you so much more addictive than heroin or meth. Think a little bit in and you don't even know it. And next thing you know, you're hooked on opioid and fentanyl and they're making a lot of money. So that's the, one of the main reasons they do it. Um, a little bit, it's meant sometimes laced with marijuana. Most of what we see, it's the heroin and, and the meth that it's, uh, laced with, mixed with. Um, it's like I said, it's used as a cut a little bit, so they take a little bit of the meth out, they put a little fentanyl in. The meth goes a little bit longer and you get, again, you get addicted and you use more. Um, it's also sold as fentanyl in the powder and the pills. Um, talking to some of the people, the different narcotics units, the potency of the powder and the pills is about the same. It's, there's really no difference than if you press it into a powder and so, and take it as a pill or you just take it directly as uh, powder. Years ago, I went to an overdose where a guy had been prescribed a patch that had fentanyl in it. And he died because he just tried to light the patch on fire and smoke it and it worked. I mean, he was smoking it, but it killed him. So any, any kind of ways they can, uh, take this, any kind of drugs or alcohol, they can think of some pretty creative ideas. Yeah, like I said, it's highly addictive. I believe it's like eighty times more addictive than heroin. It's not as cheap as it used to be, but the meth is, and so they mix it with the meth. Makes the fentanyl go farther and also by mixing it, and I'll show you here in a minute how little of a dose it takes to be lethal by mixing it and not putting a whole big dose out there, they're keeping their client base alive. So goes back to money, right? The more they can sell, no matter what it is, the more money they make. So this is a picture, the illustration of that little white powder next to that penny. For most people, that's a little, you know, those two million grams. Now, obviously, people can build tolerance. Their body chemistry reacts differently, but for the majority of people, if you ingest it somehow, that amount of fentanyl, pure fentanyl, it might kill them. And so one of the things we run into too, people overdose on the fentanyl or any opioid. Lot of the places around here, some of the hotels, some, some of the drug dealers, some of the druggies, they carry Narcan now. So they, they're down and they're out, they're basically dead. And their buddy comes up and Narcan's up. Thirty seconds, they're up, they're awake. And then they deny medical attention, which medics can't force them to go to the hospital. But Narcan can wear off and if they've taken a bigger dose, they can, they end up dead within, you know, depending on their body chemistry, shortly thereafter, hours after, so uh, they try to get them to go to the hospital, but we can't make them. So is it a safety threat? It is, um, there it is, eighty to one hundred times more potent than morphine, fifty times more potent than heroin. Part of the other thing is they don't develop these in labs like Pfizer or places like that. It's China, Mexico, or you don't test for purity, you don't even know what's always in it, social standards. Because that would cost money and that would be regulated and why would we do that? It's regulated and there's taxes and other costs associated with it that takes away from the profit margin. So like on the marijuana side, and I'm not trying to get real here a little bit, but a lot of the states legalize marijuana. The legal sales are declining because the taxes and everything associated with that are so much more, they just go buy it on the black market again. And so and then there was a, actually a, uh, there's a whole bunch of other studies about the effect of marijuana having a mental health and things like that. And so, um, yeah, it's not always correct, uh, what it's cracked up to be. It's not uncommon anymore to find hundreds or thousands of pills on one traffic stop. One of the narcotics units here, I think, pulled down thirty-five or forty thousand pills in, in a traffic stop. So those are three to four to five dollars a pill. There's some money in that. So there's a little bit of debate on if an officer just touches it, can they be can it be lethal? Can they collapse? Probably yes. Some of the studies are showing a little bit, but some of it's anxiety. Like, oh, my gosh, I just got uh, exposed to fentanyl and I'm gonna, they go into a panic attack. So, um, we train them that just treat it. If you know it's gonna be fentanyl, you think it's gonna be fentanyl, you have a powder, you don't know what it is. Gloves, eye protection, um, all of our cars, guys carry gloves. We don't know what it is. We have a new way of, uh, we test drugs on the street now where you don't necessarily have to open it and then try to get a little bit out. We can just swab it and so it limits the exposure somewhat. It's a little bit more of an accurate test. The only one around here that I'm aware of that may have gotten exposed was a probation, a parole officer who was doing a home search a couple, year, year and a half ago and got exposed and didn't die, but and go to the hospital, get checked out. Are there any online sourcing being traced to GC? So one of the things I learned, there's a lab place in Utah called sorry. Um, you, it's called FX Chem Lab, where you can through Bitcoin or any other kind of cryptocurrency, you can order stuff from them. But more than often, you won't get it. There's no way to trace where your money went, or you're gonna get something that's not even it could be aspirin or a C to benefit or something like that. So, um, they don't typically do a lot of online sales, but there are some, I'll get to it here. So there's a thing called Torz, the onion router. It's been around for years. It's a black market uh, web, black web. You can buy people on it, contracts on it, buy kids, drugs, guns, bazookas. Uh, there was a big drug, a big poor black market thing called Silk Road where they made a lot of money on drugs and finally, and hits, they took the guy down by pretending to do a hit on someone else. And so when he went to pay this, it was the core cryptocurrency, they were able to find it. But then another one just pops back up. You have to be vetted and now with cryptocurrency, it's impossible. You can't trace it. It's impossible. So most people like, we're gonna deal with our, our drug users, even the cartels, they don't do the online stuff. They just smuggle it in honestly from the southern border and that's where it's ninety percent of this, of all the drugs are coming from. Plus, you don't know, it's not immediate. Most of these guys are, when they use, they don't plan ahead. My prescription's running out, so I need to order some. They're like, I just need to go down to the street corner and get them from wherever they may get in from. They can go get it right away so they can have that next tie. And you get, like I said, you get easily ripped off. You send someone five grand in cryptocurrency and it's probably someone overseas somewhere on a beach thanking you for that next Mai Tai. And you don't know what you're always getting. Rives in the mail. So there are times when some of the package services, they, they get a little inked up about why is this person getting all these weird packages and they'll open them. And they find out. And so then they call the police and search warrants and all kinds of good stuff. What can be done? There, we can't, we can't stop it. I mean, it's just like the fentanyl's in the jail, the prisons, meth, heroin, I mean, cell phones in the prisons. But what we can do, like this is the chief Allen, it's like failing sand from the beach. You're, you know, you can't keep up. So how do we mitigate it? We enforce. Um, you guys are, we're very thankful. You guys in the state still let us police. I think this stuff hasn't been legalized or turned into. You can get a seatbelt ticket for in Oregon for like a hundred and twenty dollars. And if you have personal amount of meth, heroin or a hundred bucks, it's a and if you promise to show up for rehab, you don't need to pay that. You see what's happening over there. So, um, we one of the previous chiefs said, you don't make sales if you don't make house calls. Traffic stop, interdicting in the hotels, interdicting in places where we know drugs are being sold or used. That's how we, we should keep putting these people in jail until they change their behavior, which is the whole goal of what we do. Um, honestly, this is the biggest issue we have right now with drugs. I'm not trying, I'm not being political about it. I'm just being truthful. I don't know if the mayor's talked to the governor, but it's just whatever you want to bring into this United States or the southern border. There's a little bit through the northern border as well, but it's not as prevalent. It's coming in from the southern border. This is a fight we have every year with both sides of the legislature is mandatory minimum. So we have, so for example, Josh Lauren Deck, one of our detectives works with the Impact Team, I moderate, Madam Meridian, and one of the deals they did last week where the uh, they did a, Meridian did a press release. They had two pounds of cocaine and thousands and thousands of edible pills with THC in it. That, just that cocaine alone here is like a mandatory potential twenty-five to life. Those keep people out. They keep, you, our drug laws typically keeps a lot of the big dealers out. Um, a few years ago at the legislature, they, IPAA and FOP testified, they had a guy case has been adjudicated, so it's public. I don't know who it was. One of their narcotics units was up on a wire, so they're listening and they get a search warrant for a title three where they're listening to conversations between drug dealers. And the guy from out of state is like, we don't bring big loads in here. We don't have drop houses because if you bring that kind of stuff and die, you're going to hurt. So a lot of what we get, no matter what it is, they trip down to Salt Lake, Portland, Seattle, Yakima, uh, they bring them just enough in to try to standardize mandatory minimums. And then so they make several trips. So when you hear that, you, um, last year, there was a air of a large uh, grocery store chain who had a person and their family who got arrested in most cases mandatory minimums. The rumor is we spent eleven million dollars last year lobbying to get do away with our mandatory minimums. So we were able to wash it down through the AIC and the Chiefs Association and sheriffs, but this is one of the really thing, big things we will, we'd need elected officials when this stuff does come up in the legislature to go and listen and testify and, uh, we need to keep these mandatory minimums. Eliminate the supply and demand. And eliminate the supply, close the borders, demand, put people in jail or prison for a while where there is no demand and hopefully it'll it's never going to just dry up, but we can mitigate it and reduce it. Um, where's it come from? China, they're the primary source of making it, although because they have to mail a lot of it, they don't like to do that because it's, there's regulations and it's easier to get caught. So Mexico's starting to increase what they make and they bring it in. And then India, some of the China-based manufacturers moved to India because there's less regulation and we have a better working relationship and less suspicious of products coming over from India than we do China. And so, um, they've actually done that too, honestly, with some of their solar panels. They're Chinese companies, but they're made in India, so they avoid some of the terrorists. And so they do the same thing in the drug world. So fentanyl and powders is unregistered. It's so, it can go from China, Canada, into Mexico. Very little comes directly into the United States, um, but they have their corridors, I fifteen, north and south and eastern Idaho. That's one, uh, so Yak of the Yakima Tri-Cities area is a big deal because of the migrant workers. So then, then that hits I ninety on the north side, eighty going through Wyoming and, uh, Utah, then that's eighty-four. So our eighty-four is this Salt Lake, Boise, Portland corridor. They've actually gotten quite a few big loads over in eastern Idaho on I five doing interdiction. So that's where it's coming from. So overdoses, sorry. So this is from the coroner, um, in Garden City, we had twenty-nine and twenty-two. You can read that, um. And some of it there, it's, if fentanyl's on board, then that's part of the contributing factor potentially. So, um, it's obviously gotten up quite a bit. Especially, you know, COVID affected some of that because more people are at home. More telemedicine where you can get the opioid maybe that you really need for a medical issue and then you get hooked on it and your prescription's no longer good. So you resort to other methods. Oh, you guys have any questions on that?
This, this or what risk as opposed to police dogs?
Um, I don't think they really know, uh, I don't know of any police dog that's died sniffing it. It's kind of weird. So dogs are just unusual. You can tear gas a building where people would just run out, just their sinuses would just be going on fire. It doesn't affect a dog at all.
Really?
Okay, so, um, honestly, don't know if there's enough. I can look it up and see if there's been any studies on, but I don't know of any over here that.
I would think if it's that open, it would be affect dogs. And then is Narcon, is it just like a so, is immune? I mean, is it like a anti?
So I did not do very good in science in school, but, um, I think what it does is it takes, it's a chemical that prevents the opioid from for lack of better terms, clinging on to this, the stuff in your body. So it stops that high. It just, just boom. Or if you already have it, it totally neutralizes it.
So it's like immediate.
Yeah, pretty much in the twenty to thirty seconds, someone could be literally dead. Give him a, a shot of Narcan and right up.
Wow. And then, but it is temporary, it's short lived.
For most, whereas, uh, it depends on what the dose was, how tolerant they are of it. And so that's why the paramedics, like you need to go to the hospital and be monitored for a while. So, because it might happen to you again in twenty minutes and next time.
And do all our officers carry it?
A lot of them do. Yeah, we don't mandate it.
So. Supply with the police force doesn't give.
Yes, we have it available. Yes, and paramedics and honestly, like the seven K in the West River, a lot of the people just stay there, have it. So.
Mr. Mayor, I could just add something on the dark web, um, just to piggyback on what chief was talking about. I, I recently went to a conference from the Idaho Prosecuting Attorneys Association. And it was an FBI agent that presented, and I have this in writing, and he showed us how to get on the dark web and the federal government will tell you, and I have it in writing, it is not illegal to get on the dark web. You can get on the dark web. I can show you how to do it. Do not buy anything that's illegal. Do not correspond with these people. That's problematic. But if you want to check out the dark web, I can show you how to do it. So.
Yeah, it's hard right there. It's crazy.
That's legal. But looking according to the federal government in writing, looking is not illegal. It's what you do with the information. That's what you get in trouble.
Mr.
Yes.
Chief, thank you very much. I appreciate this presentation and I don't want to be naive. And based on your statements, uh, that it's not tested and it's not taxed, fentanyl is never prescribed, is it?
It is. So, so that would be an example with drug dogs. We, we're not, we wouldn't be allowed to train a drug dog or narcotics dog to sniff for fentanyl because it's legal. So we can't, if we're gonna use a dog to establish probable cause, they can't be trained on anything that's legal, cigarettes. So for example, never knowing what's gonna happen with marijuana, seeing what's happened in other states. A lot of departments don't train their dogs on marijuana anymore because it's our belief, once you've trained them on, you can't untrain them. And we put ten or fifteen thousand dollars into a dog. Then a year later, it's not good.
State drug dogs.
So.
I think, uh, I think fentanyl's anesthesiologist use fentanyl. Yeah, so if you've had a surgery, you've probably been dosed up a little bit.
There's, there's more than one legitimate use for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's always looked me up, give me Narcan.
But it's, it's, uh, you know, lab grade, I don't know what, I, I'd say that, but Russ would know how to say that.
Uh, counting on these drug dealers. The right amount of ratio and with lace things, that's put the right.
Pharmaceutical grade is what I was trying to say.
Yeah. First time use.
Very, very interesting.
That's fascinating.
Yep.
Scary.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, chief, uh, I remember having a conversation with you and your predecessor about, uh, officers carrying Narcan. And my impression was, uh, most did not or or there was no policy mandating it certainly.
Yes.
Um, is it your opinion that, um, if I understood you, it's, it's carried now voluntarily by, uh, uh, members of the force?
It is, yes, sir.
And, and has that, um, carriage increased, uh, since our conversation?
So one of the advantages we did have is one of our officers, our detective, Aaron Rosen, through the Department of Health and Welfare.
Yeah.
He was able to get issued Narcan kits. So he got them for free from everyone, for everyone. And so, um, there is, you know, they have to be careful about storing them in the extreme temperatures, hot or cold.
Yeah.
And to digress a little bit, because I noticed some complaints sometimes from other departments. Sometimes, well, that's why when it's hotter cold, we leave our cars running is because there's like our Alka sensor, our Narcon kits, they can be specific, heard by hotter cold. And so, uh, but yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. That makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Chief Samba, is, is it problematic for some officers to carry and others not? And from a liability perspective, if our department were to get sued because an officer isn't carrying and a, a drug user relied on the fact that, uh, an officer would respond with Narcan? I think we could always get sued for it when, when they win. I don't think so, um. They keep, they carry it. The paramedics are, it's a little different than them sent like central Idaho where you're the only first responder in an hour.
Sure.
Here, the paramedics can get on scene in twenty or thirty seconds, sometimes a couple minutes. Fire department is always on, they have paramedics on every engine. And so, um, definitely something we could look at making a policy, um, that might be I'm hesitant to make a, many big policy changes as an interim. Unless, you know, totally directed, but I don't. And I wasn't suggesting that. I'm just, uh, you know, finding problematic that we would have inconsistencies. Um, I don't.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, I, I think you mentioned that in our first conversation on the topic and, uh, the fact that in, in a small area like Garden City, uh, first responders, um, fill that gap or are expected to anyway. Is that correct?
In the more rural areas, I believe so. Yes, here we have luckily access to Ada County paramedics and Boise Fire.
That, I guess that's what I meant to say. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks, chief.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next item is item G one, resolution eleven forty-nine dash twenty-three. This is dealing relating to surplus property. Declaring some of its surplus, um, it's in your packet on page forty-seven. Are there any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution eleven forty nine dash twenty three.
I so move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes, great, thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda for this evening, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Mayor, I move we adjourn this meeting.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, we stand adjourned.